We now call this meeting the Jacksonville City Council Order. I want to welcome everyone who's come to the meeting tonight and also those who'll be watching on G10 television. We'll begin tonight by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation by our city attorney.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause once again to give you thanks. Thanks for this day that you have gifted each of us with, and thanks for all the blessings you bestow upon us individually and as the city of Jacksonville. As we recognized last Wednesday, Peace Officers Memorial Day reminded us that each day our police and our fire put their lives at risk for the safety of our citizens and for the protection of our property. We pray for their safety. We give thanks for their service. We pray for their families. We remember also our military who are serving us here and around the world. We pray for their safety and for their anxious families also. Always give guidance to our mayor and to our council as they deliberate our citizens' business. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Show move. Second.
Any discussion? Here in the House, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have a public comment now, and before we do public comment, I'm going to read the rules that the council has adopted for a public comment. One, public comment period shall be reserved as an item of business on the agenda at the regular 5:30 PM City Council meeting. There will be no public comment period held during council's special or workshop meetings. All comments and suggestions to the council during public comments shall be subject to the following guidelines. One, the public comment period shall not exceed 15 minutes and shall be placed on the agenda prior to the adoption of the consent agenda and approval of the minutes. The total time period allowed for public comment may be extended by consensus of the council. Two, each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to speak unless the council entertains a successful majority vote to extend this limit. Any extension of time granted must be granted equally to all who wish to speak. Number three, no time shall be yielded to a speaker by another speaker, and the same speaker may speak only once per council meeting, unless authorized to speak again by consensus of the council. In order to avoid repetitiveness, groups should elect a spokesperson to speak on their behalf. Number four, prior to the start of the meeting, persons wishing to address the council will register on a sign-up sheet stationed at the meeting room door. Any related documents, printed comments, or materials that the speaker wishes distributed to the council shall be delivered to the city clerk insufficient amounts, 12 copies, at least 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Number five, speakers will be acknowledged to speak in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the council from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Number six, public comment is not intended to require the council to answer any impromptu questions. The council will not take any action or will not take action on an item presented during public comment. When appropriate, the council may refer inquiries and items brought up during public comment to the city manager for follow-up. Number seven, speakers may only discuss matters which are within the jurisdiction of the council. Number eight, speakers shall not discuss matters deemed to be closed session issues, such as personnel matters, litigation, property acquisition, attorney-client privilege, or matters made confidential by law. Number nine, public speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the council. Number 10, speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. With that said, we will go to the sign-up sheet here in the order in which people signed up for a public comment, and I'll start with Melanie Marzette.
Hello, 403 Alta Vista Loop. Thank you for hearing me out. I just want to go over these numbers that I asked for probably about a month ago. It's the makeup of the city employees, and these numbers were good March 20, 2024. You have American, Indian, Alaskan. You have two females, two males, which is a total of four. Your Asian population, you have three females, six males, total of nine. Your black population, you have 43 female, 89 males, a total of 132. Hispanic or Latino, you have 20 female, 27 males, total of 47. Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, you have two females, two males, total of four. Two or more races, you have 12 female and 22 males, which is a total of 34. White, you have 115 females, 342 males, which is a total of 457. You have a total of 197 women, 490 men, and 687. That's a problem when you talk about race and gender. I don't know the hiring practices. I know what we had to do when we were actually hiring someone. I think that that needs to be looked at and revamped because the truth is, the way that it's set up, if I was hiring, I can choose my panel, and then someone from HR has to be a part of that. But I think sometimes from HR, you use that person as your diversity person, and that shouldn't be. And also, in your hiring practice, you should be rotating. You shouldn't be able to pick your friend every time that you're on a panel. It should rotate within the employees in that division. Right now, that's not how it is. We clearly have a problem, and then when you talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion in training, you had an opportunity for that when I was on the committee. I set up a training itself, your city manager, your city attorney, and council member Brian Jackson was at that training. So you do have the opportunity to go through the recreation, the state recreation, and offer that training. It's in-depth. I had to take six modules before even being asked to do the committee work, and I also opened up a diversity, equity, inclusion library. So there are other avenues. We need to start looking into that. And just one other thing for me, I will not be threatened or intimidated coming to these meetings. I have the right to speak my truth.
David Williams?
Yes, David Williams, 109 Shutterbrook Drive. I saw on G10 you were talking about Alder's Gate, you should take care of it and stuff like that, and that brought back some memories for me. My parents brought me here when I was 17 years old, back to Onslow County. They built a house in Alder's Gate. And one day, we were driving in there, and I said, "I don't get it." He goes, "What don't you get?" And I said, "Why do people spend a lot of money on building a nice house in a nice neighborhood and forget about the rest of the neighborhood?" And I was talking about the entranceway. At that time, someone was cutting it, but the weeds were all through there, the tures were all covered in grass and what have you, and there were dead bushes. And he said, "Well, what do you want to do about it?" And I said, "We should fix it." And he said, "Okay, we can do it." Well, his thing about that, he handed me a round nose shovel and said, "Go for it." So I went down there with a bunch of tools, edged the whole thing, pulled all the weeds, pulled out the dead bushes and that, and a couple of people would stop by and ask me what I was doing. I'd tell them, someone would give me a cold drink or something like that. But I learned two things from doing that. No one grabbed a shovel and came down and helped me do any of that. And that kind of got me down, but then I started thinking about it. These people work, they have families, they have responsibilities and what have you, so their lives were pretty much taken up. And the second thing, I was introduced to your firing stance down there. It was not good. But anyways, so move fast forward here to three minutes. I moved from Alder's Gate to a neighborhood out in Piney Green, and I bought a little piece of land out there and put a mobile home on it. And I went from a neighborhood like this to a neighborhood like this. This is a neighborhood that Onslow County and the state of North Carolina had forgotten about, and it was really bad. So we did three things. I realized that I could move, or I could look the other way, move, or do something about it. So we petitioned the state, got a road put into the state system. We raised money, put a street light out there where this certain group of people stood that was causing a lot of problems, and didn't last for one day because they threw rocks at it, one of those kind, and it broke, so everybody gave up. So I went back to the power company, talked to them, threw in some more money. We put a floodlight out there, and it helped out a lot, got the sheriff's department more involved. Had Clean County, went to them, and they said, "Do this, and we'll do that." I had to raise $950 out of the neighborhood. We got it. They came in with a few people and a few trucks, and it was so great. All the neighbors from A to Z came out there, you know, from young to old, whatever, and they all banded together, and we got rid of it. Then come back to garbage, and that got Clean County involved. And then let's come back to Jacksonville, Bell Fork Road. I came down and talked about Bell Fork Road and the way the weeds were many, many years ago, and how bad it was and how it was unsafe for the people to go out and do it because of traffic and what have you. So within a week, the city had people out there cleaning it all up and made it safe, and ever since, they've taken care of it. So the point of what I'm trying to say is, you know, being involved with a lot of this stuff, it'd go like this, but it wasn't consistent. You have done a great job at consistency. So what I would recommend to you is continue to take care of Alder's Gate and stuff like that, and the Bell Fork like that. You've done a wonderful job. I saw what it was like when I was 17, and I saw what it's like 40-something, and I see what it's like 63, and I enjoy coming into your city because it makes me feel good every time I see that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You did the file. The people that have the stars?
I didn't.
Okay. Several folks are here for public hearings on some matters. We're going to skip over those, and you'll get your opportunity to speak when those particular issues come up here shortly. Elizabeth Perez.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Perez, 403 Alta Vista Loop. I've been a resident of Jacksonville all my life, born and raised here. I'm now, I'm going on 27 years old this year. And the same recreation centers and parks that I went to as a child, they're still standing, but they're still the same. There's not many improvements that have been made, and it saddens me for the children that are in the community now that they don't have better. I know that there are programs that have been implemented since I have grown up in those communities, but it still, it doesn't, I don't understand how Northwoods Recreation Center is still the same building. The space is still the same, the outdoor space is still the same, the tetherball pole is still the same from when I was 10 years old playing at that rec center. I just, I feel like there's so many, so many more opportunities for advancement and progress in our community that are just being overlooked for other things to push whatever agendas you guys have. I also want to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I want to piggyback off of Ms. Marzette, who was a wonderful steward for change in this community, who implemented not only programs for our children, but also our senior citizens. She has grasped the progress from childhood all the way up to later years of life and has implemented programs that have not only improved the wellness, the health of these things, but it just, it brightens up the community knowing that there's spaces for you to go. And I just wish that there was more progress made in that. I wish that was a bigger priority. I also want to point out that we started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance that ends with liberty and justice for all. I don't see that in my community. I think you all can do better with that. I want to point out some definitions as well. Diversity means a variety of, so that, I also want to point out that race does not include ethnicity and nationality. All three of those things are different. So you have race, ethnicity, nationality, gender, sexual orientation, age. All of those things are included in diversity, and I wish I saw more of that amongst this panel as well. Equity, that means fairness, that means just. I think about the bus stops. Some are covered, some aren't. Are the people that frequent the bus stops that are covered, do they, are they more, I guess, worthy of coverage from the elements, rain, sleet, snow, whatever? This is North Carolina. You can experience all four seasons in one day. So if people go to the bus stop that's not covered, they should be okay if they can't make it to these bus stops that are covered? It just, it doesn't make sense to me. And the same way that we do have, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. Public transportation also ends at 8:10 PM. There are so many businesses, even grocery stores, that close at 11 PM. So what about your parents that get off work late and still need to go grocery shopping? What do they do to feed their children?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the adoption of the minutes and the consent items. Minutes are from the May 7, 2024 workshop meeting.
Move for adoption of the minutes and consent items?
Second.
Any discussion? Here in the House, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First item, number seven, is a quasi-judicial special use permit and site plan type III in a full house self-storage service storage facility, 570 Richlands Highway. Okay. Jeremy's going to present this item. Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Item seven is a special use permit and type III site plan at 570 Richlands Highway. This application has been submitted by Sky Partners LLC, and the request is for a 78,690 square foot self-service storage facility. Notice the location on the map before you. This property is zoned corridor commercial and is next door to Duke Energy's distribution site on Richlands Highway. The old Southern Estates to the west and then directly across is the Triangle Shopping Center and the Dairy Queen, just to give you a more identified location. Again, this property is zoned corridor commercial, as are all properties surrounding. Camelan Use Plan identifies this property as mixed use. Those properties across Richlands Highway as regional commercial. The Jacksonville Planning Advisory Board heard this at their April 6 meeting and have recommended approval. A self-service storage facility of this size requires a special use permit in the corridor commercial zoning district. With all that being said, staff is advising that the city council, along with the planning advisory board and staff, are recommending approval of the special use permit and type III site plan based on findings of fact, A through G being found in the affirmative and that the project offers a valuable service to the community. Staff, along with representatives of the applicant, are in attendance to answer any question that the city council may have.
Madam Clerk, please note that we are in a public hearing at this point. Okay, omitted that. Any questions? Jeremy?
Okay. I'm sorry. Was there a traffic analysis done on this? I know it's a real busy section right there, but there's not a ton of traffic going in at these things.
No, sir. While it is a large building, it's a proposed three, it'll be a proposed three-story facility. This type of use does not trigger a traffic impact analysis, and that was done early on in our TRC review. And the applicant has worked closely with NC DOT and with their driveway permit. There'll be very limited improvements. There's also very limited traffic that would be coming in and out based on that determination.
78,690 square feet, is that, that's not quite as big as the one on Western?
No. The previous self-service storage facility we approved at the Western, the U-Haul facility is nearly double.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jeremy?
Okay.
Thank you, Jeremy. This is a public hearing here, and I have several people that wish to speak to this matter in order. I have Helen Aitken. And this was the issue you wanted to speak to, correct?
I don't think I need to speak because I'm totally in favor of having this particular zoning take place.
That could be your testimony if you want to.
That's fine.
Okay. If you wish, you could.
Do you want me to come up?
You gotta be sworn.
All right.
Put it to go on the record. Okay. Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
Okay. Please.
My name is Helen Aitken, and I live at 760 West Fire Tower Road in Swansboro, North Carolina. I just want to take the opportunity to say that I agree with the zoning plan as listed, and I wholeheartedly hope that you pass this particular zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Judy Stevenson.
My name is Judy Stevenson. I live at 140 Strawberry Lane.
Okay. I need you to be sworn, please.
Okay.
Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I am very much in favor of this project, and I see it as a positive contribution to Jacksonville. I know we're growing, and the building itself will be aesthetically pleasing, and it is adjacent to Duke Power and to the food distribution center. As far as access, as the gentleman said, it is not a very busy area. It would be individual. So that is my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Stevenson.
Okay.
Okay, got you. Bonnie Newell, is that correct?
It's, yeah, we thought we'd swear.
You swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I did.
Please state your name for the court and address.
Hi, thank you. Bonnie Newell, 19,000 Davidson Concord Road, Davidson, North Carolina. On behalf of Full House Storage and the people who are investing in this, I wanted to take the time to thank you all and really thank your staff. We can be as, we could talk till we're blue in the face about why we think this project is a good one. We appreciate the support, and mostly, we look to invest in properties and in communities where, from the very beginning, we understand where their vision is and how we can apply that. We think that has produced a really favorable project. I can read all of the finding of facts, but I do want to introduce you to Hunter, who is going to introduce himself as an expert witness of such, and then give you a report that he has done, which I also believe you have a copy of, but just one more time to do that. So I'll let that happen, and then I'll come in and finish.
My name is Hunter Howell. Address is 412 East Chad Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511. And I'm a professional real estate appraiser, and I work with Paramount Commercial Appraisers. I'm licensed by North Carolina as a state-certified general appraiser. I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute, working towards a MI adhesion. I've been appraising properties throughout North Carolina for over 10 years now. And I was engaged by the applicant to examine the impacts of the proposed development to the value of the joint property and whether the project is in harmony with the surrounding area. And to do this, I prepared a report in which I evaluated the site plan, land use pattern of the surrounding area, and how this type of development typically impacts the surrounding property. And I have a copy of the report that I'd like to pass around, and I'll wait for those to go around, unless you haven't seen them before.
It's okay.
Okay. So my report, the site is located on the north side of Richlands Highway, near the interchange of Wilmington Highway. Partial is zoned corridor commercial, which allows for various commercial uses. The surrounding uses include similar industrial-type uses, both single and multi-tenant retail uses and vacant land. The subject's proposed use as a self-storage facility is considered in harmony with the surrounding land uses. The self-storage facilities are typically considered low-intensity uses, and this location is ideal for such a use. The main uses along Richlands Highway are similar to the proposed use on this site, with all development being commercial in nature. In addition, similar self-storage uses are located in the subject's general neighborhood. The uses include a U-Haul self-storage facility just east of the subject, several facilities further east along North Marine Boulevard, and store more mini-storage located west of the subject along Richlands Highway, to name a few. With similar self-storage facilities having a heavy presence in the subject's general neighborhood, the proposed use of the subject property is considered to be in harmony and consistent with its neighborhood uses. It is my general opinion that self-storage facilities are considered low-intensity and pose no negative impact to adjoining property values. However, to further validate my opinion, I performed a paired sales analysis of land values located adjacent to self-storage facilities. And as included in the report, the paired sales analysis was of vacant land, and one in particular was located adjacent to a self-storage facility. And this vacant parcel was, and then we also looked at other parcels located in further proximity from self-storage facilities. The land parcel analyzed is located at 1513 Onslow Drive in Jacksonville. This parcel sold in June 2023 for a recorded price of $900,000 for 2.59 acres of land, or approximately $350,000 per acre. This parcel was also zoned corridor commercial at the time of sale. The land parcel is located adjacent to the secure self-storage facility located at 1230 Gum Branch Road, and is a similar use to that of the subject. Located approximately one mile from this vacant land parcel, 1714 Gum Branch Road, a 1.77 acre vacant parcel sold October 2022 for $480,000, or approximately $270,000 per acre. With the exception of not being located adjacent to a self-storage facility, these two parcels have similar locational characteristics to that of the previously mentioned sale. Lastly, we analyze a vacant parcel at 100 Parkwood Drive, approximately 2.5 miles from the property. This property sold in March 2023 for a recorded price of $3,025,000 for 6.65 acres, or approximately 450 per acre. Should be noted, this parcel does have superior frontage, which is why it's slightly higher on a per acre. So based on my paired sales analysis with an emphasis on the sales located adjacent to a self-storage facility, we found no negative impact to property values with the site being located adjacent to a self-storage facility or in the same general area. The sale located adjacent to the self-storage facility fell between the two commercial land sales located outside of the areas with any locational features to a self-storage facility. This paired sales analysis goes along with our general knowledge of appraising similar properties that being located adjacent to a self-storage facility does not have a negative impact on properties. Therefore, it's my opinion, professional opinion, that the proposed project adequately protects other property from potential effects of the proposed development and is in harmony with its neighborhood. Similarly, it's my opinion that the proposed use or development of the land will not substantially injure the value of the joining or abutting properties. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Counsel, any questions, clarifications? Thank you.
Thank you.
So in summary, and certainly, again, happy to answer any questions, we did want to just reiterate the findings of fact and to make sure that we knew how important that was to you and that in each case, we meet them. I can go through them. They're also written in your agenda item. It would be me reading it verbatim. But again, as I say, we appreciate the opportunity to invest and be part of the community and look forward to being here if we get your support this evening. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, Ms. Newell? Thank you.
Thank you again.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak for this item? So please indicate by raising your hand. All right. With that, I'll close the hearing on this matter. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the special use permit and type III site plan.
I move that we approve the special use permit and approve the type III site plan based on findings of facts, A through G being found in the affirmative, and that does advance the public interest. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to item number eight. Item eight is a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit and type 3 site plan for a personal services establishment located at 1210 Country Club Road. And Jerry B. Smith will be presenting this item. At this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing in this matter. Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Agenda item eight is another special use permit and type 3 site plan. This is an existing facility at 1210 Country Club Road. While the aerial may tell a different story, I can promise you this property is developed and operating today. It is a multi-unit office building. The property is zoned office and institutional, as are properties to the east, west, and south of it. Those properties to the south, Front Memorial Drive, as well as part of Country Club Road. Properties across the street are home to formerly Biotest. It is now Biomet, zoned corridor commercial. To the west, further west, is Sandy Run Apartments. And then immediately at the corner of Western and Country Club Road is the Walgreens Pharmacy. This existing facility is also identified in the Camelaneus Plan as office, as are adjacent properties. Those across Country Club Road are identified as regional commercial. For your screen is the existing site as it has been developed. It currently conforms to our approval of that original type 3 site plan and still conforms to it today. With this, they are requesting a special use permit to allow the use of personal service establishments. Let me back it up real quick for you to that map, and I'll read the definition of personal services, if I can identify it in my staff report. Because that is a question that comes up. But basically, a personal service establishment is a very broad use category. It includes anything from barber shops, beauty shops, your postal annex-type stores, UPS package stores, your Quick Ship, yoga studios, martial arts studios. Those type of uses that propose to support the adjacent uses. So a barber shop or a postal shop where you would send packages and stuff would be in appropriate use within an office institutional zoning district. With all that being said, the planning board reviewed this at their May 13 meeting, and they, along with staff, were recommending approval of this request, with findings of fact A through G being found in the affirmative, and that the request will add an additional use to the area, a valuable use at that. Representatives of Philip David, the applicant, and staff are happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have.
Counsel, any questions of Jeremy or the applicant?
Oh, I have, I have a question. With regards to the personal use, what did you say those listings were again?
Your typical uses for personal service establishment are barber shops, beauty shops, martial arts studios, yoga studios, a fitness center. Something like UPS store where you go and deliver packages, send packages, or a postal UPS, USPS store, something like that, where you would have a personal mailbox, get stamps, maybe a professional services.
Okay. So with the personal use, with the personal uses, as you're stating, nothing would be disingenuous to Sandy Run Apartments, considering that we have, like, children that live in that neighborhood? So individuals that cannot be near children, businesses of that nature, would not be considered a special use if counsel were to?
I do not believe so. Those, none of those type of more, I guess you could say, your controversial uses or anything. No bars, nightclubs, taverns, or anything like that. Restaurants, no. Special eating, no. Nothing like that where any adult activities or alcohol that would be sold would not be there. Because retail is not, retail sales, so to speak, like convenience stores, definitely prohibited.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Did your applicant want to speak at all?
I do not know if they, Mr. Matt Ray was one of the representatives here. I do not know if he wanted to speak or not.
No, neither of us has any questions.
With that, I'll recess the public hearing on this matter. Counsel, you've been asked to consider this site 3, or the site plan and the special use permit.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion that counsel approve the special use permit and type 3 site plan based on the facts of findings A through G being found in the affirmative, and that the request will add an additional use for the area.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Takes us to item number nine. And this is a public hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment dealing with warehouse, use-specific standards for warehouse freight movement use. And Ryan King will be presenting the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. You know, industrial uses are not normal, typical uses, that we get a lot of questions here in the city of Jacksonville. That's, that's not necessarily a good thing. But recently, we had an inquiry, which caused us to look at the ordinance and evaluate it, and we determined that we believe that there was some error when we drafted the use table, the use-specific standards as it relates to the warehouse and freight movement category, and thus, the reason why we are before you tonight asking for an amendment. Basically, what you have here is the warehouse and freight movement category within Article 4.1 of the UDO use table. And the standards that are identified on the right-hand column, it was only applicable to cold storage plant, I'm sorry, outdoor storage, which is here. You see, there's no underline, and then parcel services. And all the other uses didn't have the standards. But then, when you read in the text, they did have the standards. So we want to correct this use table to eliminate the confusion that somebody that just picks up the use table possibly could find themselves dealing with, where they don't look at the next part to see that the standards are applicable. So we're proposing to amend that to provide that clarity. Additionally, we want to strike through parcel services as it relates to this land use, as it relates to the standards that are applicable, and also to create an exception for your residential multifamily low-density zones. We've also broken down the parcel services into a less than 2,500 square foot category, and then a larger than 2,500 square foot category. We've, along with that, we've created new places for the smaller type, the parcel store, UPS store. They could operate there if they're less than 2,500 square feet. That's, in essence, the size of two tenant spaces. And then, if you're looking for a more industrial-type, larger facility, that would be the secondary part, and we're proposing to allow those as permitted uses in just the corridor commercial and industrial zones. So if the proposed use came along in a corridor commercial zone, it would be a permitted use. They would have to meet the standards of E4B, which basically states that these standards would not apply as it relates to parcel services. All right.
Any questions of Ryan on that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone present wish to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the text amendment to the UDO.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to item number 10. This is another UDO text amendment dealing with several different things, and Brian's going to cover this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, once again. So this particular request is a citizen request or a company request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. This request has been brought forth by Capital Growth Buckhalter Incorporated, who we have representatives here with tonight. They're being represented by Clinton Cogburn. And then, we have other representatives from the company as well. So once we get to the public hearing part, if there's any questions, concerns, they may come and introduce themselves and speak to the mayor and council as well. But this, this proposal would create a brand-new land use as it relates to convenience stores with a full-service restaurant indoors. So right now, we have a convenience store with gas sales, convenience store without gas sales. But the industry trend has been what you see at some of these restaurant, gas station combinations, the Wawa's, the Sheets, Royal Farms, et cetera, where they have a full-service restaurant within that establishment. The Unified Development Ordinance has a maximum parking standard of 150%. There's also provisions for park-and-demand studies. But since this is a new use, staff worked with the applicant to propose an amendment that would clearly define this versus using it as a one-off opportunity. Because we think this is something that we're going to see more and more of in the future. I know there's been some recent newspaper articles. We've got four site plans submitted for Wawa's, for example. And they want to increase the maximum number of parking, or the number that they're required to provide. Because, because of that indoor restaurant facility, they want to be able to provide additional parking spaces, more so than your typical convenience store. So with that being said, they've submitted this amendment. Staff has worked with them, and they've, we've worked collectively, and we've come up with a brand-new land use type, which is the convenience store with a made-to-order restaurant with gas sales. The new parking standard would be one per 150 square feet. If you'll see right above that, currently, the standard is one for 250. So it's only going up slightly, but they feel like that's the necessary adjustment to make their product be the most beneficial for their business protocols and desires. So additionally, we've created additional use-specific standards as it relates to convenience stores. And we've created a new definition, working with the applicant. So if counsel is inclined to make this amendment, this would create those new standards for parking, use-specific standards of the use table and the definitions. Be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have of staff, and then also, as I stated, representatives are here tonight.
I have one for you, Mr. King. How often does a citizen or business come to you and ask to increase the standard? Has this ever happened before?
It happens sometimes, but not that often.
I have a question. With regards to the convenience stores with the made-to-order restaurant, full-service restaurant we're talking about, out of curiosity, do we have to work hand-in-hand with the county? Because wouldn't it have to be the county that gives the sanitation ratings? So how does that process work? And would we be in violation if we were agreed to adopt this, but it's not aligned with the county standards?
So the county would have a role in that permit approval process. But the way that our current process works is they run those systems. Either they use our, get ours approved first, and then they fall back to the county, or they run those processes concurrently. It's up to the applicant. But the city and the county both have a say-so in terms of the permitting process.
Well, I mean, the thing about it is that they don't pass the health department inspection, they don't serve food.
That's correct. They would be unable to open and serve food if they didn't, if they didn't get that permit approved by the health department.
But they can continue with the other services, just not having the restaurant. So if that is the case, then would it have to, would we, would it have to come back before counsel to now reverse that particular standard because you're no longer operating the restaurant? Would that fall under another type of UDO standard?
That would then become a convenience store with gasoline sales without the restaurant, and then they would basically have non-conforming site features. They would be overparked if they provide more than what the requirement is. But they would, that would be something they would be doing to themselves if, if they decide to eliminate the restaurant component.
Any other questions of Ryan? All right, we will open up the public hearing in this matter. Does anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? Yes, sir. If you'll come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Clint Cogburn. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm, Warden Smith, with offices at 82 Patton Avenue in Asheville, North Carolina. It's good to be here closer to the coast and down from the mountain, and I appreciate counsel taking this matter and reviewing it. I also want to thank staff, specifically Ryan and Jeremy, for all their hard work. As Ryan mentioned, we have been working with staff for a number of months on this text amendment. And, and they've been working directly with my clients. I represent Capital Growth Buckhalter and Wawa. Here with me tonight is Jeff Lewin, who is representative, representative of Capital Growth, and Mr. Payman Nadeemi, who is a representative from Wawa. They're happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm also available to answer questions. I'll keep my comments brief. Again, staff has been very thorough. The Planning Advisory Board reviewed this last week and unanimously recommended that this text amendment be approved. And we're coming before counsel today with what we believe is a narrow and targeted text amendment to just address a new type of use, as Ryan mentioned, which is this convenience store with made-to-order food service operation. Because of that combination of those two uses, there is a need for additional parking at those locations. And in looking at the UDO, what we landed on after discussions with staff in an attempt to both narrowly tailor the amendment and have minimal non-conformities, if any, was to meet in the middle on that, on that parking standard, which currently, you have a parking standard for one per every 200 square feet for convenience stores with gas sales. It's one per every 100 square feet for restaurants. When you put those together, we think that it's appropriate that you meet in the middle at one per every 150 square feet. And so that's the reason for this amendment. Again, we worked with Ryan to narrowly tailor this to create a new category that, but for the parking change, mirrors that of the convenience stores with gas sales. So in terms of the use districts, it mirrors convenience stores with gas sales. In terms of the development standards, except for this parking flexibility, it mirrors convenience stores with gas sales. We just targeted this because of that, the unique nature of this type of use and what we foresee Jacksonville seeing from this type of use in the future. So we're happy to answer any questions. We appreciate counsel's time. We appreciate your consideration. And we respectfully ask that you adopt this text amendment.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Cogburn?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, you've been asked to approve the text amendment to the UDO.
Make a motion that we approve the text amendment, UDO text amendment, and that it does advance the public interest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to number 11. This is a legislative map amendment rezoning from residential single-family to residential multifamily high-density Gum Branch and Western Boulevard area. And Jeremy's back, and at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, agenda item 11 is a proposed rezoning submitted by A-Size Construction. This is a proposed rezoning of a 33.15 acre tract currently zoned residential single-family, seven. The request is to rezone to residential multifamily high-density. You'll notice the vicinity map before you. This is part of the overall vineyard's development that we've all seen being constructed just off of Gum Branch Road, near the corner of Western and Gum Branch. Notice the zoning map before you with the RSF 7 to the north. Parts of Carolina Forest development to the northeast. To the south is undeveloped properties, split zone corridor commercial residential multifamily, as well as the Palisades Apartment Complex, zoned residential multifamily high-density, and then some undeveloped properties, zoned corridor commercial to the southwest. The Camelaneus Plan identifies this and the greater parcel of the vineyard's development as mixed use, as well as those properties to the southwest. Properties to the southeast are identified as high-density residential, currently still undeveloped, and then the low-density residential in the Carolina Forest development. This is what the map would look if it were to be rezoned. Again, it is a 33.15 acre tract of land. It sits on its own, and you're being asked to consider this request after the planning board and staff have recommended approval, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning of- found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating high-density residential development opportunities. Representatives from A-Sides Construction, Ty Ward and Associates are in attendance, and they, along with staff, will be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Any questions, Jeremy? This is the regular meeting. Open up the public hearing on this matter. Anyone wish to speak to this? Okay. With that, nobody taken, we'll close the public hearing. Counselor, you've been asked to consider this app amendment.
Mr. Mayor, move that we grant the rezoning request upon finding that the rezoning is reasonably, considering A- through J are being found in the affirmative, and it does advance the public interest.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor, signify with a CNI. All opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have item number 12 on the agenda. This is the fiscal year 2025 budget adoption. And Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. We are presenting to you tonight our FY '25 proposed budget. We started this process in November with the city council coming together for a vision planning session. We've utilized the similar schedule that we did last year that allowed for public input on the front end, and we had our public hearing. You'll recognize the FY '24, or FY '25 budget does go from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. The tax rate will remain the same in the proposed budget at 60 cents per 100 valuation. Water and sewer rate increases as scheduled previously by the city council for a 2.25% increase, and the recycling and residential sanitation rate increase as scheduled last year by city council at $4. There are some other changes that we've proposed in. You'll see in front of you the budget schedule that we presented out and was approved by city council before we started this process. As previously mentioned, the public hearing was held on April 16th. We have not received any comments from the public based on the proposed budget since that time. We have had council discussion and review, and been available for questions, and the copy of the proposed budget has been at the clerk's office and at our public library. In front of you, you'll see the breakdown of the budget proposed for '25, and you have that comparison for what the FY '24 amended budget looks like. Proposed budget FY '25, total $119,436,756, broken down by fund on the screen. Total revenues from the general fund, we want to point that out. You'll see the '24 numbers and the '25 numbers to show any kind of growth or changes in between the two. You will see a change in the total revenues from FY '24 amended to FY '25. That's based on the amount of general fund proposed to balance out the budget, the numbers being 66 million versus the 73 million. You will also note an increase in the property tax and in the sales tax. We think those are both good signs. That shows property values increasing. It shows sales tax, that the economy is moving forward based on the people having income that can satisfy the needs of keeping an existing business structure that we have here in Jacksonville at this time. Mayor, we stand before you for any questions on the proposed FY '25 budget.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Ray, on the budget. Budget, fee schedule, order, CIP.
Move for adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Second.
And accompanying documents.
Fee schedule and the capital improvement plan included.
Sure. Second.
Second, Mr. Sosa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify with a CNI.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have item number 13. This is a code amendment. Let's get it up here.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this ordinance change. This is at a request from the YMCA for their summer camps. Currently, our city ordinance prohibits shooting a bow or a BB gun with inside-the-city limits, no exceptions at all. And so, when the Y came to us and asked us if they could be granted a permit, or if there were any exemptions, we started some research and determined there are no exemptions. So, what we're proposing is an exemption that would allow the YMCA and other governmental agencies, and other schools, and other nonprofits to participate in educational or competitive programs, either using a bow and arrow or a BB gun. And so, there'll be some strict guidelines. The police department would do the permitting process. There's some guidelines that we would propose as far as the range facility, whether the backstops, things like that, to ensure it's safe. It needs to be a supervised program, and it needs to be a program that's recognized either by, there's a number of organizations, the Boy Scouts of America, the National Archery Association, a number of them are listed in the background material. And so, this would be similar to what they recommend. The BB guns are used, there's a plastic, or thick plastic shield behind those, would be five feet above and five feet below, at least five feet to the side. Those would have to be inspected by the police department, or the specifications would be, before they would be set up and used. Again, they would be based upon a number of different organizations that are listed in the materials that could provide those specifications. The Y people are here. If there's any other questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Well, this just won't open the door for building over on Elizabeth Street, the BB gun, right?
No, but it has to be either educational, which that would be what the Y's doing, or competitive. Say, a high school wanted to have an archery contest with another high school, that would fall under that, but it's really narrowly defined to keep people out of the neighborhoods from shooting BB guns and arrows.
Is there a timeframe on their permits? If it's a summer camp, is there just an expiration date to this?
When we developed the permit, we would put an expiration date on that, so every year, they'd have to come back, especially since some standards would change. Some of the educational process would change, because we'd have to look at the curriculum to make sure it's an educational curriculum, and then we'd also need to know who that's sanctioned by, if it was a competitive type of use.
I have a question, chief. So, this approved range is going to be on the property of the YMCA?
Yes, it is.
Okay, question. Does that now mean that the recreation department can bring students over or participants in our recreation department to be on this range?
They could, and right now, our Parks and Recreation uses ranges that are on base for archery, but they could theoretically construct one and operate within the city with a permit from the police department if they needed to. That would be up to the Parks and Recreation Department.
What I'm asking in specific, since this is being approved for the YMCA, our participants in the recreation department could not go on these premises as well and use them since they are citizens?
I'm sure they could. I'm not sure how you sign up for the camps. I'm sure the Y people would be glad to work something out, but I'm not sure how that works, but that would be between the Y and the city recreation department.
But you're not targeting this to the Y.
No.
And this could be, the city rec department could, on their own, do the same process and have this program.
That's true. They could, Northeast Creek, or some other, they could build a facility, and they could have archery or target practice with BB guns on city park property. Same with the school. One of the elementary schools or middle schools, as part of their PE program, could have a, could have a program, as long as it's educational or competitive, and develop a program if they so choose. They'd still go through the permitting process.
What, I'm just thinking, what societal, or educational, or other benefits do you see accruing from this amendment?
So, the only thing that I would encourage is that this is another activity that would be provided in the city, that would keep kids from getting into trouble. Obviously, I think it's important that we engage them in positive activities, and as long as it's done through an approved curriculum, say, from the North Carolina Wildlife Association, I mean, commission, or Boy Scouts of America, or the Y, it's going to provide those activities to keep kids engaged and keep them out of trouble.
Thank you.
Also thinking it would help promote safe use for any of these, for the archery equipment and stuff.
Because the educational program talks about the safety of BB guns, and it talks the safety of arrows as well, so there would be a safety component with those programs.
Having grown up in these situations, I'm a youngster myself, there's a lot of value to be had in these. It's very much like any other sports program, whether it's baseball, or it's first tee, or something else. It's something that children can be part of. They learn a skill, they learn safety, it builds confidence. I've seen many young ladies, you know, gain a lot of confidence when they learn how to shoot an arrow, or they learn how to shoot a rifle or BB gun. So, it's, personally, I think it's a very good thing for kids to have the opportunity to participate in.
And I'm trying to think, but I know, it must have been when I was in Belle Fort, that we actually had archery at one point. We were introduced to it.
I know we did at Coastal, but we were over Georgetown campus a long time ago, and we had archery, took archery class.
Mr. Carter, why are we approaching this as a first reading?
Because, Mr. Vittner, the legislature about two years ago took a serious look at all city municipal ordinances that had criminal components to it. Your zoning ordinances now cannot be any criminal component to it at all. It has to be enforced civilly. You can still, through the code sections, you can still make criminal components like this would be criminal if there was a violation, but they also said you not only have to have one reading, but you have to have two readings. If you pass this tonight, it's the chief and my intent to put this on your consent agenda on your June 1st meeting in June for approval for the second reading, but that is a legislative requirement.
Two readings.
Two readings, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anything further, counsel?
Make a motion, we approve the code amendment. Second.
Any further discussion? Here and now, in favor, signify with a CNI.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, our team motion to go into closed session to discuss land acquisition.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to let you do your reports, and then, we don't anticipate any action taken by council, so that we can finish up in there.
Got a report, Sam. Start with Mr. Warden.
No report, sir.
Severs?
I'll just throw a reminder out there for everybody who keeps the calendar like I do. June 1st is the Ospreys' first opening game. If you're able to get tickets to that, please come out and have some fun. And I will say, Juneteenth is coming up. We have three observations, two in the city and one in the county, on Friday, June 14th, and then, of course, a festival will be happening at Riverwalk Park on 15th, Saturday, at 10:00 a.m. And for those like myself who have graduates in their home, congratulations to all of our high school and college graduates. This is the season for graduation. Congrats on your accomplishments.
I'm excited about the baseball. I get to throw it out in the first pitch. I'm going to throw a fastball.
Start practicing first.
I've been working on it.
We'll stay behind the fence.
Congratulations and honors to Councilman, it's on her 31st birthday.
Happy 31st.
No other report.
Mr. Vittner stole my ideas there. I was going to say 30, so.
54, it's okay.
That was last year.
Well, we also, several of us got to go to the grand opening of Station 4, the firehouse, so congratulations, Chief Tom and Chief Funeira and the rest of the public service group. That was a beautiful place. They did a great job with it. It's a great location, helped serve the area, and I think that would be very helpful on that western area with all that expansion, and then going behind one place as well, so.
Very good.
Yeah, also, we were, many of us were able to attend the groundbreaking for the Museum of the Marines. Really looking forward to that. It's an honor for the Marine Corps. I appreciate it. Without the Marine Corps, at least half of me wouldn't be here. But anyway, also, one of my seniors wanted to say thank you publicly to JPD and their program to actually go out and help seniors. I think they have an agreement with, was it Walmart?
Yes, it was Walmart, and it's the CARES program.
Right. Yeah, she was really happy about what was done. They actually asked her, and she told them, so that, you know, hats off to JPD on that one. Also, I wanted to recognize that this is Mental Health Awareness Month. If you see issues with your, anybody around you, especially if you've had the issue yourself, and you recognize it, do not be ashamed to speak to that person, and actually, you could tell them where you could possibly get assistance. I know we also deal with the opioid issue, and usually opioids or any other drug is the result of some kind of mental health issue, you know, self-medicating. You know, I saw a lot of issues when I was working as an advocate on base, especially with a lot of people returning back from the wars, and it's a serious issue in all communities now, so don't take it lightly. And anytime you could, like I said, you put your arms around these folks and try to guide them, you know, especially of those, as like I said, that are already going through the issues themselves. And on a somber note, you know, would like to say that Robert Grant, who is one of our own, he passed away. For those that don't know, he played with Baltimore Colts when, and at that point, I guess I was going against the Dallas Cowboys when they won the Super Bowl. He's a member of our Sports Hall of Fame here, so, that's all.
Mr. Ray?
As mentioned earlier, we did have our Peace Officers Memorial Day. That event happened last week. This is our memorial every year to celebrate and remember those peace officers who have given that ultimate sacrifice in their service to our community. We bring together multiple members of the community to never forget, and that's something that our community does each and every year at multiple events, is to make sure those people that have served the community and given that sacrifice are remembered as part of who we are and the fabric of our community in service. We appreciate our partners, multiple people pulled together to make this happen. You'll see the bagpipes, you see the 21-gun salute, you saw the chief, the sheriff, the mayor, all involved. Reverend Churchwell delivered the invocation, and Lieutenant Ketchum gave the, sang the national anthem, and that was a beautiful event for all that was there, and I will not say that we look forward to that event every year, but we do appreciate that event, because it gives us the opportunity to not only remember those individuals, but to show support for their families. As Mr. Sosa said, we were excited to hold the open house for Fire Station 4 in that same week. That was on May 16th. Multiple people came out to see the station. As you can see from this angle, a beautiful new home for these individuals. Chief Tomlin did an excellent job, allowed the mayor to say a few words, and then Captain Jimmy Davis actually rang the fire bell to call it into service and put these firefighters into action while we were there. They went to multiple calls, so we were sitting there having Chick-fil-A, and they were out working, and we stayed in their house, hanging out while they were serving the community. Once again, it's an amazing thing. One of the things the mayor said in his comments there was, this location will truly truly serve that greater region." And that's our challenge each and every time we look at our public safety team, is to figure out how we're going to get to the people in need when they need us. This firehouse is an excellent example of utilizing technology and location to make sure that we're there. Those seconds, as Chief Tomlin will tell you, do not belong to his team, they belong to the individual that's making the call that needs help. So the faster we get there, the better we are serving the 72,000 people that call Jacksonville and the surrounding region home. So very proud of the team at the fire department, at public safety, and thank you, council, for making this happen. This is no easy feat, as Mr. Sosa did allude to, bringing this together. You think this is $8 million of a firehouse now. This is a big deal, and it happens through the support of the community, the actions of council, and then through the efforts of design and, and construction. The last thing you'll see here is, this is the firehouse pole. You have to climb up it to slide down it, so if that's something you'd like to do, please contact Chief Tomlin. He will figure out how to make this happen. You cannot go below the building, there's nothing there that I'm aware of. As Mr. Jackson said, the fun didn't stop there. 20-plus years in the making, and these individuals were able to ceremoniously shovel out the ground to say, "We are at work now for the Carolina Museum of the Marine." Very exciting occasion. The sun was shining bright, the flag was flying. You'll see in the background there, that's a, an apparatus that was donated by Sanders Ford to go into the museum as part of their exhibit. It just truly shows that this is overall a community effort, something that I believe we can all be proud of, and we show that this process has not happened overnight. It's taken quite a long time, and it's going to be amazing and something that we're proud of. As Mr. Jackson just alluded to, everyone in this community is touched by the activity of the Marines and the work that they do to serve not only us, but to serve our country. And this Carolina Museum of the Marines is really going to give them the credibility that they deserve and to draw attention to their efforts. You will see here in the center Sergeant Major Hul, huge proponent of the activities and, and the effort to make it happen. As we continuously hear those efforts, he's been an excellent advocate, as well as General Al Gray. And so those individuals that have put forth the effort to make this happen, we are proud of them and proud of their efforts. I don't know what this guy did with the shovel, but we took this picture, so it had to show up here today. It's a great example. This is effort over decades to make things happen, and what you've seen this year through the actions of the council and the community, making multiple things happen. And that's a beautiful community activity is to be successful. And the last item I have for you, Mayor, is last week, the One Place, Don Rochelle, who is, I believe, sitting behind me unless she walked out, her team hosted a roundtable event at Sturgeon City. What that event signifies is partnerships throughout the community. Sturgeon City is a, is a big partner of our city team and of the community, and One Place is a partner, and both are leaders within the community. You're going to see Chief sitting very comfortably on a couch. I'm not sure what he added, but he definitely sat on that couch, and you see Sheriff Thomas there as well. And what they did is they participated in the roundtable discussion about adverse childhood experiences and child abuse prevention. A big part of what we're doing in this community is figuring out how do we serve our citizens, whether they're newborn or whether they're 120. That's, that's our population, and One Place focuses on the efforts. So next door to Fire Station Four, you're about to have a new home for One Place, and that's also a project that's taken a little bit of time and effort, but it's something that we're all going to be very proud of as One Place opens those doors and continues to serve the community in these efforts. So I just, I mentioned this one, Mayor, because the partnerships make the community special. This is always our city, and without those partnerships, we're not going to make anything happen. So as you approve your budget and your capital projects plan, just know that that budget represents all of the community and the things that are happening day in and day out. So we appreciate it, and we appreciate the partners that make this community amazing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss land acquisition.
So moved.
Thank you.